Yep, there you go. Gassed and answered.
All right. Good evening. It is seven o'clock on October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. This meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called to order. I know for the record that this meeting is being offered remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to chapter one oh seven of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-two and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty F, so that the chair may inform all of the participants of said recording. If anybody is recording this meeting, please notify me at this time. All right, seeing none. I'd note for the record, participating in tonight's meeting are myself, William Ramsey, Chair, Board Member Joe Fisher, and Board Member Liz Klein. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. I believe we have two sets of minutes tonight for approval. Joe, you ready to proceed?
I am.
Liz, ready to proceed?
Yes.
Then I'd take a motion.
I move to approve the minutes dated October sixth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an eye as well. The motion carries. I'll take a second motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes dated October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call, Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an eye as well. The motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to consider the request of Paragon Funding Group LLC doing business as Wahlburgers nineteen Shipyard Drive, Hingham, for a change of officers, directors, and a change of ownership interests. I see we have Alan McKenna with us tonight. Alan, good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for having me.
Good to see you. Go ahead.
You as well. Thank you. This is a application for from Wahlburgers that's located in the Hingham Shipyard. The licensee is called Paragon Funding Group Three. It is owned by a parent company called Wahlburgers Holding Company. The transaction that I'm here to talk with you about involves a change of ownership at the holding company level. So what we refer to as WHC, we have a partner that's coming on and acquiring a twenty-five percent interest in WHC, the holding company. So we're here to get the approval of adding that new member. They will also become an LLC manager. Because we're an LLC, what that means is that the ownership interests among the group will be adjusted slightly to bring on this new member at twenty-five percent. That chart is on page twenty-five of our packet if anyone has any questions. But other than that, it's a pretty simple addition of a new member at the LLC parent company level.
Alan, thank you very much. I reviewed the packet. Everything looks in order from my end, but let me just ask Town Administrator and Sharon, any, any issues on your end administratively?
Sharon? None on my end at all. Everything's in order.
Great. Thank you, Sharon. Let me turn to the board members for questions. Liz, do you want to ask any questions?
Hi, Alan. I, I did review the, the package with Sharon as well, so I don't have any questions or concerns.
Great. Joe?
This is a question for Sharon, I think. Are, are there any background checks or other reviews that need to be done as part of this, and have they been done?
Not on our end. They're all done on the ABCC has required queries for all interested parties with the financials.
Got it. Okay. No other questions. I also read the package. Thank you.
Thank you. Any members of the public have any questions or comments? If you do, if you could just raise your hand virtually or physically, I will call on you and unmute you. Okay, seeing none, I take a motion?
I move to approve the request of Paragon Funding Group LLC doing business as Wahlburgers nineteen Shipyard Drive, Hingham for change of officers, directors, and a change of ownership interest in accordance with the application for amendment, change of officers, stock, or ownership interest filed with the town of Hingham on September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two, and subject to the approval of the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an eye as well. The motion carries. And Alan, before I let you go, just want to thank you and Wahlburgers for your support of our community. I note that just last week you did a fundraiser for the police department's Pink Path project, so very much appreciate your support.
Thank you.
These local, local initiatives.
Thank you. We're always happy to do it. Thank you. And thanks again, Sharon, for all your help with the application.
You're welcome.
Take care. Thanks.
All right, Alan. Have a good night.
Thank you.
You too. Take care.
Next item on the agenda is to consider the approval of the issuance of a special one-day wine-in-mall beverages license to the Friends of Hingham Cemetery Incorporated for a conversation with the authors of Forever Home to be held at Ames Chapel on Thursday, October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two from seven PM to ten PM. And I think Libby King is going to present tonight. Good evening, Libby.
Yes, good evening. Yes, I'm Libby King. I'm on the board at the Hingham Cemetery. And we're having, we'd like, we're having an event on the twenty-seventh and would like to be able to serve beer and wine. So we'd like a one-day liquor license to do that.
Libby, about how many people do you anticipate coming to your event?
Well, maximum we can have is ninety in the Ames, but it will probably be closer to sixty for this event. We haven't quite gotten up to full capacity.
Thank you. Let me check with Sharon. Is everything in order, Sharon? Your end?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Did the, did the police department raise any concerns or have any questions about this event?
None at all. They've done a number of these at Ames Chapel over the years, so it's consistent with what they've done in the past.
Great. Thank you. All right, let me turn to Liz, see if she has any questions.
I don't have any questions. I reviewed the packet and I saw the reference to the other, the concert series, which I know there was some communication back and forth, but it sounds like all of those questions have been answered and issues resolved. And I know those, those events went, went well, so I'm sure this one will go smoothly too. So no questions. Thanks, Bill.
Joe, any questions?
With respect to parking, I'm, I'm sure there's adequate parking. I just want to ask how, how parking is going to be arranged for this event?
Well, usually they park in the, the parking up by there by the Ames.
Yep.
So.
And there's, and there's adequate parking to accommodate what you're.
Yes, we have. This is, this is part of the series that we've had for the last couple of years. Usually we have an event, the Dead of Winter Series, which is usually January, February, and March. We do one event each, but this was an additional one that we, we added in this year.
Got it. And I do note in the application that previously Police and Fire had raised questions in connection with the application that was for the two thousand and nineteen series. So I'm assuming that those, the way those issues were resolved in two thousand and nineteen are similarly resolved for this event.
I think so. We have not had any issues with them.
Yeah, I can tell you, Dave, Dave did sign off on it.
Okay, great. Then I've got no other questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Do any members of the public have any questions or comments regarding this application? All right, seeing none, I take a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine-in-mall beverages license to Friends of Hingham Cemetery Incorporated for a conversation with the authors of Forever Home to be held at Ames Chapel on Thursday, October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two from seven PM to ten PM.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call, Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an eye as well. The motion carries. Libby, good luck with your event.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your help.
Excellent. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a Climate Action Planning Committee update. And I see we have Brad with us tonight to give us an update on the work of the committee. Brad, good evening to you.
Good evening. I, I have to say I'm impressed with the efficiency when I told members of my committee we were fifth on the agenda. I think some of them said, ah, we'll join a little bit later. Missed the fun.
But we, I'm glad we got you. That's good.
I'll try not to slow us down too much. Thank you very much for welcoming. I'm here joined with by Tanya Bodel of Energist, who of course has been a continued great partner, and you may remember her from our time in June. So thank you very much for agreeing to allow us to present to you again. I do have materials. I'm happy to share them. If you want to make me a co-host or art, I don't know if you have them as well, if you'd prefer to share.
We have your PDF file that we can share.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. So what we would like to do today is just give you an update again on where we are in the process. The short summary is we are moving along as planned and are extremely pleased with the progress that we are making. So if you can advance, you know, just again to reorient you, you know, our objective here is to inform you of the outline and anticipated content of the plan, the draft of which is targeted to be completed by the end of December. And so we want to update you on our planning efforts, the contours of the plan, which we had a goal of creating those contours by the end of September, and we've met that. We'd like to walk you through them a little bit. Inform you about some exciting opportunities that the Inflation Reduction Act does allow towns like Hingham, so it's perfect timing, and then talk about what our next steps are. So, and I'm sorry, you can move forward again. So just to orient you on our public outreach timeline, so we've engaged with the public multiple ways. Obviously, coming before you is one of the methods we have to engage with the public. We've also held two public engagement sessions where we sought input from the public. The first one, we kind of looked at as the friendlies, you know, the audience that we anticipated to come. You know, and help inform us on our efforts, those who are, who are cheering us on. And then we had another session last month where we attempted to engage a broader audience as we started to make more progress on what would go in the plan. Mostly the friendlies showed up again, you know, so we're continuing to work on how we can engage those who may not be aware of or are less inclined to the work that we're doing because we think it's critically important that we get every voice within Hingham to weigh in on what we're trying to accomplish because at the end of the day, it is a Hingham plan that needs to have a Hingham community buy-in and work for Hingham. So we are laser focused on that outreach effort, so we can talk a little bit later in the presentation how we anticipate continuing to engage the community. And then the next slide orients the schedule of what we're trying to develop in our timeline. So I mentioned a little bit ago that September thirtieth, we wanted to sufficiently develop the contours of the plan, so that's what are each of the components that will go in the Climate Action Plan? What are our summarized recommendations for that? And then as we draft the plan, that's where the rubber meets the road and some of the harder decisions start to get fleshed out, and we'll talk about towards the end what some of those harder decisions may be. So if we have the, and again, all of this is predicated on the idea that there are items that could come out of this plan that will have town meeting impacts. So we want to start working in the article generation process, socializing those ideas now. And by having a complete draft of the plan by the end of December, we'll already be well into our way of identifying what those warrant articles may be, what the terms may be, and talking with the select board, of course, and advisory and town administration and other interested parties on what those are. And then by the end of March, we would expect to have a completed draft of the Climate Action Plan ready for, now we say for a vote by adoption of the town, but we're really talking about individual warrant articles there. We are not anticipating that the plan in its entirety would require a townwide vote. That is more likely something that the Select Board would need to approve, town administration would need to adopt, and then any other recommendations that directly impact or require action by bodies that are not under the jurisdiction of the Select Board. We would need them to approve it as well. The school committee is the most obvious example, I think, there. All right, next slide, please. And just as a reminder, you know, while Hingham is, I like to think of us as a leader in our community in this area. We are not a leader overall in the state, and that's a good thing because we have several models and peer towns that we can look to and have pulled from as we develop our Climate Action Plan. So you can see just a few examples here of other towns that have embarked on this effort. There are more. Some have completed their plans. Some are drafting them. Some are already reaching out to us and asking for our experience and guidance on how they can develop their own. And we get, when we get to the contours of the plan, we are in good company. The six contours that we targeted are quite common within other towns, or at the very least, they've considered them and adapted them to their specific needs. So again, we are, we are in good company. We're not doing anything that is unheard of or not seen before. But of course, we're taking the good ideas that are out there and applying them to Hingham. So with that, let's get into the contours. So there are six contours that we are including in our Climate Action Plan. Those are natural resources, buildings, energy, transportation, mobility, infrastructure and waste management, and then public health and community preparedness. The building, energy, transportation, mobility, and waste management are kind of like the, the meat of what we target for carbon reduction efforts. And then when we talk about natural resources, it's how can we preserve the natural carbon sinks that we already have in town. We are blessed with a lot of beautiful public land, forested land, that definitely helps us in that regard. And then with regard to the community preparedness, when, whenever you talk about carbon reduction and climate planning efforts, cost is always forefront of the mind, you know, something we must focus on. So we want to make sure we factor in equity considerations and, you know, continued availability of, of, of energy, particularly for those communities that need. When we think about our healthcare communities and our elderly population that may have, you know, you know, machines and other needs at home, we want to make sure that we've got secure energy sources for them. So when we evaluated this, you can kind of see what goes into each component. If we start at energy, you know, when we think about carbon reduction, we're focused on renewable sources. We're very fortunate to have the Hingham Municipal Lighting Plant, which is a leader in this area and well on its way to building a renewable portfolio. I believe right now they're about fifty percent renewable. That's not counting the carbon offsetting credits that they've acquired. And so they're in, well on their way and doing much better than the investor-owned utilities in this area. When we talk about buildings, we talk about energy efficiency. First, how do you reduce your energy need? There are natural carbon reduction impacts with that, but then how can you move to more of an electrification environment? Again, as HMLP continues to move to a very clean sourcing of its power, then by using more electricity as opposed to other energy sources, you get the natural add-on benefit of that clean energy, which helps to reduce carbon transportation. Of course, how can we, you know, encourage electric vehicle adoption in the town? That's both, you know, private electrical vehicle adoption, and one way to do that, of course, is make charging stations available. Other things are what can the town itself do to provoke, you know, cleaner transportation options? Whether that's providing public transit or alternatives for automobiles. Then when we move into waste management, you know, we look at, you know, how again do we reduce our waste? You know, how do we reduce usage? Carbon is a nor, is an offset of, you know, I'm sorry, not an offset, but a, a natural, you know, product of, you know, you know, plastics, you know, any type of, you know, development activity. So if we can reduce our use and recycle what we have, we can reduce our reliance on carbon generating activities. And then with community-wide initiatives, you know, that's communication, education, getting the community on board. There is a lifestyle impact, you know, from moving to a carbon-free model. So how can we support and educate and minimize those impacts on our residences? Or, and then lastly, with natural resources, I talked about carbon sink development, conserving land and water. And, you know, there are benefits of that too by enhancing the recreation environment for those in the town. So those are kind of like the summarized, you know, overall components of each of those contours. And then the process we went through to generate these is we would take each contour and we would come up with a very detailed list. How did we do that? We did that through surveying the public. You know, we had received over three hundred and eighty-five responses to our public surveys. So we're very pleased with that outcome. We would do that through our public engagement sessions, asking the public to weigh in on the considerations and provide feedback. And then through hours and hours of committee meetings, we would sit through and the committee members would, you know, investigate, research, and then come up with ideas for what we think could work for Hingham. And then for purposes of tonight's presentation and engaging with the public, we kind of summarize those into high-level components, and we'll walk through what those summaries are. Next slide, please. So here for energy, you know, we can bucket these basically into renewable energy, system upgrades, and reliability and resiliency. You know, and within each of those, as we noted in renewable energy, you know, HLP, HMLP continues to good work in acquiring carbon-free sources of energy. There are ways we can enhance the town's ability to, to make use of them through net metering programs as well as taking advantage of federal and state incentives. And these are things we're talking about in the energy area right now are part of HMLP's short, mid, and long-range plans. So they are great partners in this regard and already working on that with system upgrades as we rely on HMLP's continuing, you know, greenification of its energy sources. If we're going to lean on that and expect higher electricity use within the town, sure that that system is stable and able to deliver that power. And so of course, HMLP has already been on board with upgrading its distribution system. We know of the substation work that they're doing and transmission lines. That's part and parcel of this. And then there are other incentive programs that we can take advantage of through the state, such as like the PACE Financing Program to help encourage commercial development and use of like solar resources or onsite generation of energy. And then reliability and resiliency. Of course, as we mentioned, we need to make sure that our electricity grid is stable. And so as we encourage individuals to adopt, you know, such solar energy at the home, you know, creating micro grids, having battery storage, things of those nature to help encourage, you know, a constant flow of energy in the home. And then with buildings, this of course is a huge component and definitely one that will cause some of our biggest challenges because you're talking not only about, you know, commercial and town-owned buildings, you're also talking about homes. And Hingham is blessed with a great deal of historic homes. I believe upwards of thirty percent of the homes in Hingham are historic. So when you think about how do you preserve the character of the town while also increasing efficiency and moving to things like solar arrays, battery storage, you know, charging stations and so forth? How do you do that in a way that does not take away from the character or necessarily cause a great deal of cost to individual homeowners? So this is a focus of ours, a bit of a tough nut to crack, but we've got ideas and things that we can do to help minimize the impact as much as possible. So of course, we need to talk about energy efficiency. How do we promote, you know, insulation in the home? How do we pro-upgraded windows, things that reduce the need for high levels of energy? And then how do you move away from fossil fuels to electric heat and cooling sources? Heat pumps is a big component here. Big push through in the state for heat pump adoption, and we do the same here in Hingham. And then building codes to the extent that updates to the building codes could help in this area. That's something that we should consider. Massachusetts has put out for comment a new stretch code, which is planning to adopt at the end of the year. That stretch code won't. It's, it's a bit odd in that while it moves the needle forward, it only does so for new construction, doesn't really impact existing homes. So, you know, we'll see where that goes, and if there are other building codes that we may consider that would be more helpful in this area. But that's something that, that we are examining. And then what do we do about, you know, fossil fuel hookups? You know, is the carrot and the stick approach? The carrot is what incentives can we offer to move towards cleaner energy? The stick is preventing unclean energy, fossil fuel energy from being brought into the, the town. Other towns in Massachusetts have taken steps in this area. You know, we're not necessarily advocating for that, you know, but it's something that, that we can talk about and consider. And then with transportation, you know, electric vehicles look for as many opportunities as possible to convert the existing municipal fleet to electric. You know, there are options with school buses. You know, there are some pilot programs that Massachusetts has launched in that regard. There's also been many conversations in the past with the police department about what options there are for electrical vehicles, and those conversations have gone well. So the technology is still playing catch-up, you know, but we are getting there. And so there's opportunities for that. HMLP, we know, is also adding public charging stations within the town, so there's always opportunities to increase that and still to take advantage of many of the tax incentives that are right now available to EV programs that are offered at the federal level. And then it's like, what can we look at for automobile alternatives? You know, anyone who's lived in Hingham now for a couple of years knows that every year Main Street gets busier and busier, you know, and so what can we do to help? You know, minimize the number of cars on the road, and many of those cars don't originate in Hingham and don't end up in Hingham. And yet their emissions are in Hingham. So we want to think about, you know, we, we need to account for that and then think about how we can minimize that. And we're pleased in many of our surveys to, that individuals seemed quite amenable to some public transit options, whether that's, you know, an EV bus that runs from the shipyard down Main Street, ends up in Derby Street and continues that loop, or maybe stops off at, well, at Linden Ponds or Peniman Farms, you know, and, and on those ways. So there are some ideas there to consider. And then with waste, so we looked at possibilities of adopting a pay-as-you-throw program. Other towns have taken advantage of that. What that would look like can take several forms. So, but there, that is, has been a proven way to reduce waste, you know. So people start focusing on what they bring into the home, what they take out and can make composting look more attractive because a great deal of our waste is actually food waste. And so when you think about, you know, the cost of the weight, which is mostly just water and food that you're throwing away, it's very easy and inexpensive to compost that at home. And then, of course, continue to push with recycling as much as possible. And that's both, once the materials are brought into home, you know, taking them to the transfer station to be recycled, or of course, just looking for opportunities to reduce what is brought into the home in the first place. And that's trying to minimize the use of, of single-use containers and plastics. All right. And then, community, we've talked about and are quite pleased that we're moving forward with a sustainability director or sustainability coordinator. Education here is going to be extremely important. I mentioned earlier that the impacts to lifestyles could be very real in moving to a carbon-neutral environment. So, you know, we want to ensure that we educate citizens on what that means and talk about how to minimize that as much as we can. You know, how do we encourage alternative vehicle transportation? So public pathways, you know, can continue to move with bike lane adoption. Consider that there may be opportunities elsewhere in town to make greater residential spaces. You know, some folks suggested, geez, wouldn't it be great if the downtown Hingham area, you know, could be a pedestrian-only zone and walking area? I'm not saying that's going to end up in the ultimate plan as a recommendation, but these are just ideas that we can consider to how, how to minimize car use. And then with air quality, we know we have natural gas leaks in town. That's no surprise to anyone, you know, so how That's no surprise to anyone, you know, so how can we be more aggressive in minimizing those gas leaks? And working with our investor-owned utilities to make progress on that. And then there are state efforts to work to decarbonize our natural gas pipelines and to continue to engage with the state on ways that we can bring that to Hingham. And then natural resources. Again, we talked about how we are blessed with a lot of open land in Hingham, a lot of great forests. So how do we, you know, protect those carbon sinks and also continue to find opportunities to increase carbon sinks? I know we lost a lot of trees in the bomb cyclone of Oc-October, what was it, twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one? You know, so how can we encourage, you know, tree adoption and other greenery in the town? We've got a lot already, you know, but there's always opportunity to do more. And that includes conserving open space and also conserving water as well, you know. We saw that obviously with the summer with the terrible drought that we had. Water conservation is key and we've got a lot of open lawns in Hingham. Not only do they use a lot of water, you know, but they also don't contribute that much to carbon reduction. So are there other ways that we can consider native drought-resistant plants, ground cover, other plantings that we can do that continue to have the character of the town? Not need as much water and absorb more carbon? So there's a a lot of opportunity there. All right, so that takes us through the contours. Now let's talk about some things that could come up at town meeting. Or also, you know, contribute to some of the harder decisions that we're thinking of. None of this is set in stone. I merely throw this out as a preview of what could come. You know, as we draft the plan and the committee continues to wrestle with some of these harder decisions, we'll come with more concrete proposals to you. Obviously, funding is always a concern whenever you talk about climate change and climate action. So there could be funding initiatives that come out of our recommendations. One funding initiative might be we find success with a sustainability coordinator role. And maybe we want to request that that become a permanent position, you know, in Hingham. So obviously, funding would need to be expended there. Other funding considerations could be, you know, increase our energy efficiency measures within the town. You know, we are developing buildings in the town that have been making great strides in carbon reduction efforts. What funds do we consider expanding there or retrofitting existing buildings? There are no lack of opportunities there. The good news is that there are many sources external to Hingham that can help us in that regard. We're already part of the Green Communities Program, which provides funding and as Tanya talks about the Flation Reduction Act, there are options there as well. One thing that we definitely expect to come out of the Warren article process is how do we implement the Climate Action Plan? Right now, we have two climate-focused committees in town, the Energy Action Committee and of course, the Climate Action Planning Committee. Once the plan is developed, the CAPC's work is done, you know, but how do we oversee it? How do we keep it going? And we know just like a master plan in Hingham, that it's not once and done. It's a continual conversation must be engaged at a later point in time. So it's only natural that there be a citizen body to help oversee and implement the town's efforts to follow through on the plan recommendations. We are excited about the PACE program. I know the commercial version was brought to the select board previously. We are hoping the state adopts a residential version of that program. I know Representative Moschino has introduced this into the state legislature already. And so if that picks up, that could be a great boon to helping making financing available within the town to move towards solar adoption or other green initiatives in the home. Massachusetts introduced the Mass C E C Climate Leaders Program earlier this year. It hasn't been finalized, they it was an idea that they put out for public comment. The CAPC commented on that. The program looks like it could be a great benefit to Hingham because many of the requirements of that program, Hingham already meets. And what this is, it's a it's kind of like the next version of the Green Communities Program where several green communities are identified as climate leaders in their area. And while that has some more requirements that come with it, it also offers greater opportunity for more funding. And like I said, since most of the requirements Hingham is already meeting, if that program were to go through, it would be and we were chosen for it, it would be a nice, easy transition for us and an opportunity to accelerate some of our plans. We talked about the stretch code earlier, you know, and that would be part of the Mass C E C Climate Leaders Program to look at the stretch code as that comes out. So again, we'll see where all that lands. And then we talked briefly earlier about natural gas hookups and perhaps oil or heat boilers, you know, the carrot versus the stick. The CAPC's approach is to always prefer the carrot. We want to encourage and incentivize as much as possible. However, sometimes talking about the sticks helps to encourage those who don't like the stick to show up and tell you why they don't like the stick and what they would rather have instead. So it's important, I think, in the public conversation to throw out these options. But again, we tend to lean more towards the carrots where we can. So with that, I'll pause. I've just been talking so much for the efficiency play. I've just been talking fifteen or twenty minutes straight, my apologies. So before we get into the Inflation Reduction Act, I'll just ask if the members of the select board have any questions.
Brad, I what I'd recommend is you continue through and we can write our questions out and ask you at the end, but thank you so far.
Perfect, perfect. All right, great, thanks, Bill. So Tanya, I'll turn this over to you if you can walk us through the Inflation Reduction Act.
Okay, so thank you, Brad. The Inflation Reduction Act is seven hundred and fifty pages, so for efficiency, I won't walk everybody through it. But I will highlight some of the good news associated with how the Inflation Reduction Act helps Hingham to achieve its net zero goals. As you, many of you know, the Inflation Reduction Act was signed into law in August. It is a treasure trove of funding for green and clean and alternative energy options. And that is what can help Hingham to get to net zero. Now, the interesting thing about this is the running joke in the energy industry is the Inflation Reduction Act is actually an energy policy act in disguise. It pulls together a lot of the incentives that have been made in the past for renewables like wind and solar. But for the first time, it's technology agnostic. Recognizing that there's so much going on in the industry and changes in technology that to give incentives to specific types of technology, even though they do have that, could be limiting. So this is a long-term set of funding over the next ten years. Like I said, hundreds of billions of dollars. And it's called the Inflation Reduction Act because Joe Manchin refused to sign the the legislation that had it in before because he was afraid of inflation. But he was convinced by, among others, Larry Summers and other economists who he spoke to that by making investments in alternative energy resources, you would be decreasing demand for fossil fuels, which would reduce prices and lead to would reduce inflation across the board. And that plus a promise by the Democrats to allow him to get his sighting moving forward prompted him to sign. And of course, at the end of the day, he's he's not getting at this point the sighting permits for the pipelines that he was looking for. But that said, it is now passed, it is law, signed by Biden, pen-handed, Joe Manchin. Next. Key items to for Hingham. One generous incentives, so things that were starting to ratchet down or had disappeared are now back and and bigger than ever. So solar, for example, was going to be a twenty-two percent coupon rate, if you would, a discount off of the investment. And there's now a thirty percent tax credit off of that, and that's extended for ten years. Batteries and energy storage receive the same incentives and batteries can be on a standalone basis. You used to have to build a battery with solar to get the incentive. Now you can put backup batteries in your garage and and get some of the benefits, except that the batteries in this act are bigger. The hydrogen at three dollars a kilogram. There's some efforts already underway in the Northeast for hydrogen hubs. This is a potential technology that could help Hingham. Not today, not in five years, but most certainly I'd expect by ten years out, this would be a part of helping achieve the net zero goals. Key for Hingham, in the past, the renewable incentives were tax credits. That meant that a nonprofit or a municipal entity such as Hingham that does not pay taxes was not able to get the benefit of those incentives, those tax incentives. There just wasn't any tax appetite, obviously, for somebody who doesn't pay taxes. However, this now allows for direct payments. So instead of having to go through a developer who might have higher cost of capital and and then, you know, engage in their own their own terms and conditions, Hingham and Hingham Municipal Light Plant can make these investments directly if they so choose. And they can get the same benefit or the same cost reduction as a taxpaying entity. It just shows up as a direct payment back. So there's a reimbursement program that gives direct payments to the non-taxpaying entities. And this really frees up the opportunity for Hingham in their march to net zero. New technologies, as I said, this is a technology agnostic bill and it has a ton of incentives beyond wind and solar. And there are additional incentives for towns. Hingham probably won't deply energy communities or disadvantaged communities. But there are also some incentives for affordable housing, which could be quite lucrative. Some of this money will be flowing directly to the implementers, the investors like King M and HMLP. And some of it will be flowing through the states. And this is where the Mass C E C Climate Leadership Program is gearing itself up to be able to help distribute some of this money. And I am also aware that Mass C E C has money coming from the state from the infrastructure bill. And they're looking to help make grants to communities like Hingham that are leaders in this space. But now you there are discounts for microgrid equipment, interconnections. And like I said, they're very lucrative. So Hingham's ability to go net zero just became more flexible and less costly. And I think that there's going to be a lot of choices to choose from. The problem and challenge for the Climate Action Planning Committee is there's just a lot of unknowns. So we're making this an evergreen document that addresses and and understands. We know what we don't know, but at least makes a move forward in the strategy for going forward to achieve net zero.
Here we are, thank you. So thanks, Tanya, for walking us through that. So let's talk about where we're going next. So as I mentioned, we had done public surveys, public meetings, we've also interviewed stakeholders within the town. And of course, I've kept the select board informed of where we are. So whatever comments we've collectively received and continue to receive from that process, we're taking back in our draft of the Climate Action Plan. We're currently working on that draft. We anticipate hosting another public engagement session probably in early December. We haven't selected a date yet, but we're targeting the for end of the first to the beginning of the second week of December, where we'll bring out the finer details and what I'm kept mentioning those harder decisions. And so we will bring those harder decisions forward and allow and encourage, you know, reactions to that from everyone in town. Once we go through that process and from that, warrant article decisions will be made as well. We move to finalize the Climate Action Plan and then go on an education blitz, you know, in the spring timeframe to let everyone know where we're coming out, what actions we're recommending and make sure it's all wrapped up in time for town meeting. And so then just a plug for how to stay involved with us. We keep an active website, so please, you know, follow it on the town. We have all of our actions, our minutes and so forth. And Energist has been keeping a lot of materials moving as the decisions that we make and recommendations we make, that all is available on the town's website. And we'll have the draft plan available, like I said, in the December town frame and continue to have after that, once the plan is out, meetings in January and ongoing for an education blitz and then, of course, whatever shakes out in town meeting. You know, look forward to everyone being there to vote on what may come. And with that, I'm happy to take questions.
Brad, thank you very much. This was a, this is great and Tanya, thank you as well. You know, in preparation for tonight's meeting, I was thinking how far we've come in the past three years. You know, I the creation of the CAPC and and buying into the net zero goals. The charging stations, which we approved last year, which we're hoping to see up soon. The Sustainability Coordinator, which we're hoping to get that position filled as soon as possible. We're still working toward that. And seawalls and other infrastructure defenses we're putting up. And I I think the work of your committee is going to tell us what else, you know, the question is, what else can we do? And I've often said that the battle against climate change is going to be the biggest one we face in the future. And I think we're going to have to attack it two ways with capital infrastructure improvement, seawalls, et cetera, but also being proactively a proactive goals as you've kind of identified. And I just really appreciate all the committees doing and you're doing great work and it's it's exciting stuff. So thank you for all you're doing. Let me see if anybody has any questions or comments, let me go to Joe first.
Okay. So again, Brad and Tanya, thank you. This was incredible presentation. And Bill, just letting you know, the charging stations are out. My office is right on Station Street and I I see I see the charging stations there now. So it's it's good to see the progress has been made. I want to pick up on one thing that was in the in the Climate Action Proposal that has been something that I have advocated for which is improved bike access. The bike lanes are mentioned there. There are European cities where they've significantly mitigated their their environmental concerns by getting the cars off the road, having people on bikes. Not mandatory, but all of a sudden it's easily easy to access and it happens. In particular, e-bikes have been all the rage. So I applaud you for including that. It's not clear to me how we can advance it. Bike lanes are not all that accessible. I know when my my kids were going to high school, there was not a safe way for them to bike to to the high school. So I don't know what we as a select board can do, what we as a town can do, but that is something that I'd like to get behind to see how we can make that a priority for the town. One thing I did not see, and maybe I missed it in in the Climate Action Plan, was efforts to coordinate with our neighboring towns. Their joint projects, transportation. There are, there's a lot of opportunity, not only because they're right next door, but to share the costs. And I'm wondering to what extent that has played a role or will you anticipate playing a role in the next phase of your of the committee's work?
Yeah, so it's an excellent point. And there is certainly a role to be played. Now, we've had plenty of, I guess, informal communications. One way we're served is Tanya, who is in Cohasset and is on Cohasset's Alternative Energy Committee. We've natural naturally had many co-discussions there. And with our sustainability coordinator role being shared with Cohasset, there is just naturally a lot of synergy right now with Cohasset and opportunity there. We are part of continued discussions with regional bodies such as Sustainable South Shore and transportation. Considerations is a primary concern, the Sustainable South Shore, and that comes up quite a bit. That's a collection of South Shore communities. It's a citizens group, individuals who who meet and pursue climate initiatives. And so that's on the agenda. We know from our green communities work and program and getting instant grant incentives there, the state very much The state very much favors regionable regional work, you know. So if you can, you know, get dollars for a project that benefits three towns rather than just one.
Yep.
It's a natural winner. So we are looking at, now I should say, we plan to look at grant opportunities through that lens. Right now, the C A P C's work hasn't targeted specific grant options or so forth. We're still lining up what the details of the plan are and what those buckets. So we know what programs we can attack to help fund those initiatives that we want to plan for. But we know the success of those is enhanced by making it a regional program. And so that will definitely be an outgrowth of what we're looking at.
Great. And one thing I I picked up on many things, but one thing that I I noted was there is an effort to be to focus on goals and not on the technology to achieve those goals, because the technology shifts. Things that may not be practicable today, maybe in two years. And, you know, things that we thought were not possible five years ago, we can do now. So I I like that. To, but I did hear a discussion about let's let's go with heat pumps. And I just don't know if that i- if we are grounding ourselves in a particular technology that either may make sense. I'm not sure. I I haven't looked at the science. I mean, I knew I know that there was at some point concerns about whether or not in cold climates it made sense. The technology advanced, I think it does make sense. But other technologies may advance. I just want to make sure that we're not embracing a program that is wedded to a particular technology, but rather wedded to the goals that we're looking to achieve.
Yep, absolutely, and understood and spot on with the advancement of technology. Let's just look at heat pumps for a second. It's old news, you you noted that, Joe, but there has definitely been, you know, there's still urban myths out there that oh, heat pumps are not effective below twenty degrees or or pick your pick your number.
Right.
And that's no longer true, which is a great thing, but that's still, you know, air source heat pumps. You know, many of us in town, me included, you know, have a baseboard heating, hot water heating. And having a heat pump from air to water heating option would be a game changer for many homes that don't necessarily have the ductwork or don't want to do the mini split, you know, component for for the air source. So that technology is in progress, you know. It's not necessarily at a point where it's ready for mass adoption at a residential level. But it's getting there, you know, there are these constant technology updates. The reason we talk about heat pumps most commonly is, one, there are, there's a massive push at the state level. So there are state incentives for that. HMLP is offering incentives for that. Federal incentives are also coming down the pike for heat pumps. And under the current technology, it is the most efficient way to move to, you know, a a great HVAC solution that is efficient and can take advantage of clean electricity. Not every town has that, but Hingham has made greater strides than many in that regard. So it's a good play for now, and it's an adaptable technology. So that's where there's a lot of talk about heat pumps, but you're absolutely right. There are other technologies that can come down the pike that may be better later. And we can only react to what we know now. But we can anticipate that those other changes may come. So when we talk about what is a planning effort look like from a brass tax standpoint, we are very focused on the first couple of years, maybe five years as an outlier. Once you start getting beyond that point, you're talking about more aspirational items. There are some things, you know, like right now, we're working on building approving two buildings in town to go forward. Those will have a seventy-five to a hundred year life to them, you know. So you got to plan for those now. But you can still even in those incorporate things that are adaptable to future technologies later. And that's what our plan has to look at. What can we do now? And then what can we do to position ourselves to take advantage of improving technology down the road? And every couple of years, we'll want to refresh our plan to say, okay, what were those aspirational things that we can now bring into the brass tax real world today? And what other aspirational items were we off the mark on? And how do we have to shift to those?
Yep, I mean, the my my comment was really born from my personal experience. I'm I am in an office building. We had heat pumps. And about ten years ago, there was a push by a number of environmental groups to get us to change to natural gas, because that was the more efficient way to go.
Right.
And lower energy costs. And so I I dragged my I I did not attend to that pressure and now heat pumps. And so I didn't switch off the heat pump. So I'm just, you know, I'm just sensitive to what may be currently technologically in vogue, if you will, and then it turns out we switch back. And there are costs to residences, cost to businesses constantly switching from one to the other. Just just making sure we're being sensitive to that. I I want to turn just one more point, and it was really a Tanya's discussion with the Inflation Reduction Act. And I just want to pick up on some of the things she said and really pose the question to Tom, which is, to what extent are the foster school and public safety facility building projects being structured in a way to take advantage of the reimbursement opportunities in the Inflation Reduction Act?
Sure. So Michelle has been monitoring that, Joe, for us, and she's not here tonight to answer your question. But you can certainly talk to her tomorrow. She's been monitoring all of those federal agents, all federal opportunities for us and and trying to incorporate anything we can.
Great. Okay, thank you. Yep, no other questions.
Great, Liz, any questions?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Brad and Tanya. It's a wonderful presentation. I love how this is coming together. I'm excited to see the the plan, so thank you. I was wondering if you could very briefly just talk about the public feedback that you've gathered, were there common themes or priorities that you heard across the various sessions?
Sure. So so when we elicited public feedback, we brought all of the contours to them. And on our first session, we let each, we had breakout rooms, and we let each, you know, attendee decide where they wanted to go. I was surprised waste was the winner. So waste had the most interest. So we have a a strong ground swell of recycling and composting advocates in the town. So that was a a strong theme there. And then how to bring greater electric vehicle adoption and make that easier and more amenable to the town was another a theme that we encountered with our electricity generation. We're pleased to see that most people are very, you know, pleased with and proud of the light plant and the good work it does. So we feel good about that. But one of the questions that comes up with regard to incentives is when you look at the mass saves incentive programs, they can be very generous, which is a great thing. But because we don't pay as higher rate, we're not paying that extra cost that funds those incentives. Not everyone appreciates that, so they question, geez, can the incentives within Hingham be better? You know, so I know HMLP is considering, they're currently doing a rate study. And one thing they're considering is how do you resolve that tension of how much do you make incentives available and how much are you willing to pay for that versus we all like having cheap, green energy? But at the expense of not having as many generous incentives. And then you get into equity considerations of that as well of like, okay, there are some very big homes in Hingham, and there are some not so big homes. And it costs more for a bigger home to transition. And so if you offer more incentives, are you essentially incentivizing those who already have more? You know, to make those changes, so equity considerations are in there. So I'd say those are kind of the the themes that we consistently encounter. But again, waste for me was the surprise.
Yeah, you probably had a lot of people from Cleaner Greener hanging which is great. And I was going to ask you about that, actually, the the pay as you throw program, that's something they've been studying for a while and and shared their data with the Sustainable Budget Task Force. So that's certainly something that that I think we're all interested in in researching more. Are you working with members from that group?
Yeah, so the way the C A P C is constituted was in anticipation of precisely this. So Cleanah Green or Hingham has one of the voting members representatives on our committee. And we are hooked into pretty much all of the committees that would have a vested interest in the outcome of our work.
Okay, great, great. And related to the incentives that you were talking about, do you, do we have any benchmark data yet about what communities that have created a climate action plan are using and if if they've had success with the incentives in terms of implementation?
Yeah, no, it is a great thought, and the short answer is no. And and part of that is because it's a little over the map. You've had some towns who who have had climate action plans now for the better part of ten to fifteen years. But to Joe's point, if you look at those documents now, they are woefully out of date because technology has changed so much and incentive programs have changed so much. And then other communities only have had it in effect for like a year or two. So it's still a little hard to gauge what they've been getting. So it's definitely something we should look at. I just don't have data for you.
Okay, all right. Thank you. No other questions. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. Any members of the public have any questions or comments, Brad? This committee? All right, seeing none. Brad, thank you again so much for the update. You're doing great work. Tanya, thank you for coming tonight as well for the presentation. And Brad, just keep us posted on how we can help you move this along. And we are here to help and assist, and I can appreciate, very much appreciate your work.
No, I definitely know that. I can't tell you how much it means to the members of the committee and the public, how receptive you've been and supportive. We greatly appreciate it. It's really nice when all of Hingham is moving and rowing in the same direction. We certainly feel that way. So thank you for your support and your time this evening.
Have a good night. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is appointments. There is one appointment this evening, and I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Erin Kelly to the Community Preservation Committee for a three-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All those favor by roll call, Liz.
Hi.
Joe. Thank you. I think you're still muted.
Sorry about that. I I tried to stop the motion because it really should read, bear with me one minute. It really should be that she's being appointed for the remainder of a three-year term. This is not a three-year term. So if you could amend the motion to say that to appoint Erin Kelly.
Who is she remainder? Who is whose body is she filling?
Well.
Someone resigned from the, it's a select board appointment.
It is, but we clearly are not extended. This is not for three full years. So there is this, this is the remainder of a term. Three years would would not end June thirtieth.
Is that correct? I mean, the vote list doesn't didn't have that language in it.
I know, I know.
We're just a couple months late doing the appointment.
Right.
It should have been June thirtieth, twenty twenty two.
Right, so we're now in October. So it's it's really the remainder of a three-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Not critical because we know it's going to be June thirtieth, twenty twenty five either way.
Yeah, why don't we keep keep the motion as if there's a problem, we can always amend it. I can make make it next week. But yeah, let's just keep the motion the form that's sent. If there's a problem, we can always amend it next week and reappoint it.
Then I will also be an I.
And I'm an I as well. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Does any members of the public like to offer any public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, we will turn to Town Administrator and Select Board Reports. Art, why don't we start with you this evening?
Thank you. I just want to remind members of the community that our preparations for a special town meeting continue. We are completing two public information sessions this week, one tomorrow night from seven to nine P M, conducted remotely by Zoom with the details available on the town's website. We'll be completing our third public information sessions coming Saturday from ten A M. to noon at Hingham Middle School and look forward to meeting members of the community and sharing our information about the public safety facility and the new Foster Elementary School, the proposed projects and fielding. Any questions residents may have? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Art, Liz?
No questions. Thank you, Art.
Joe.
No questions.
All right, we return to Tom. Any reports tonight, Tom?
Just adding on to what Art just said, reminding folks that they can, again, go to the website. There's a series of tours available for the police station, the thank you, Dorothy, the police station, the the fire station, the senior center and the and of course, foster school. So folks can get a chance to walk through and see those facilities for themselves in advance of the meeting. And and as Dr. Gallow just reminded us all that the bright orange warrant should have arrived in all of your in all of your mailboxes today. So I'm very exciting. It's a little bit of fall color in your mailbox today.
Tom, thank you. Any questions for Tom, Joe?
No.
Liz?
No questions. Thank you.
Excellent, and appreciate the reminder. Dorothy, thanks very much. All right, it's time to select board reports, Liz.
I'd like to read a statement from the Commission on Disabilities, if that's okay. The Chair Stephanie Gertz prepared this and and asked me to to read it as part of my report. October is Disability Awareness Month. At the Commission on Disabilities, we know that this is an issue twelve months of the year, and we are happy to be in a town that cares all year round. In addition to supporting the commission, the town also has an active CPAC, which stands for Special Education Parent Advisory Council, a vibrant SNAP, which is the Special Needs Athletic Partnership Program, launch and best buddies. We would like to take this opportunity to recognize and thank these wonderful organizations and to give our appreciation for the privilege to serve Hingham's disabled and special needs residents. So we certainly am grateful to the Commission on Disabilities work, not just during October, but year round. They have done a tremendous the tremendous job since they kind of got back up and running. So many thanks to them.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Joe, anything to report tonight?
Just picking up on Art's topic of the public information sessions, I just want to applaud Lyndon Pons. They are conducting their own public information sessions. They had one last night talking about the ballot initiatives as well as the town meeting and the local issues here with respect to Foster School and Public Safety Building. So thanks to Linda Pons for their efforts to communicate and educate their residents about the information to get the information out for ahead of town meeting and ahead of the election. That's it. Thank you.
Great. I have two things this evening. Tom and I this afternoon attended the tenth tenth anniversary celebration of Discovery Committee at the Senior Center. It's a committee dedicated to lifelong learning. It was a wonderful event, very well attended, and I appreciate the invitation this afternoon. And also, I want to also report that the Recreation Department will be offering babysitting services for the special town meeting. So if anybody is in need of those services, I'd encourage you to contact Direct Department. And you can sign up, but I actually, when I was leaving ten holiday, I saw Mark Thorell. And they had just they just put this information out this morning, and he said they already had, I think, twenty-five or thirty people signed up for it. So that was good news. So with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So move second.
All of the favorite, Joe.
Hi.
Liz.
Hi.
I'm an I as well. We are adjourned. Have a great evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.